Ladies and gentlemen, Council meeting in January 21, 2020 is called to order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Donna, will you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Innesco.
Here.
Councilmember Bode.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
All right, let's get on with the agenda. Does the council have any changes to the agenda, or Jeff? Do you have any changes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would like to remove, under Agenda Mida G, item two, the group rate study. We'll remove that from consideration tonight with council consent and bring it back February 4th as a date certain for your consideration.
Let's move on to council reports, and we can start down with Mr. Innesco.
Okay, outside of our briefings and meetings, I have a Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting tomorrow, and that is it.
All right. Mr. Bode.
And I just attended a criminal justice board, and it was my first one, and it went well.
Good, all right. I don't have a whole lot. I've been, I was on vacation for a while, and then I got sick. And, but I did go to the Chamber Gala the other night, that was fun, and today I had my Mason Transit Authority Board meeting.
Following our last meeting, I had the Opiate Stakeholders' Meeting, which was held in Belfair. I had three phone calls from constituents that I answered, and I will not be in attendance at our next meeting, as I'll be out of town for Chamber business.
Bard's Ribbon Cutting is Friday at 11:30, so if anybody's available for that. Next week is our Action Days, Tuesday and Wednesday statewide over in Olympia with the legislature and others. I will be attending a AWC Nominating Committee Board meeting on Monday, and that is my week.
Joe. Upcoming appointments, other than City Action Days coming up on the 28th, 29th. I had a representative from the Squawson Island Tribe reach out to me today looking to establish a joint city council, tribal council meeting on the horizon the next month or so, and with, with the mayor's, at the mayor's request, if we could get concurrence from the rest of the council to ask staff to help coordinate that further, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. We've come to our first general public comment period. Has anyone signed up for general public comment?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone for general public comments.
All right. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to prove the consent agenda as published?
Make a motion to accept it as published.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we're going to have a presentations. First one, our first presentation this evening is from Jennifer Beria, Executive Director of the EDC.
Hello. Thank you for having me, I really appreciate your time. When I was asked to come and present to you, there were no real topics, so I thought I'd kind of approach it like an annual report from the EDC and give you kind of our numbers from 2019 and what our 2020 workload looks like. So, at the end of 2018, our board met and had a retreat and decided that they wanted to focus on two really main kind of segments of economic development. The top priority being our Business Retention and Expansion Program. That is essentially the work that we do with our local businesses, our current businesses that are already here, already thriving or struggling. What it is, is we have staff go out and meet with a specific number of businesses. Since it was our first year doing a formal program, we, we took it more of segments from each kind of sector that we have here in our area. So, total, we got out, visited with business spotlights, site visits, and analysis. We visited 175 businesses. Of those 175 businesses, 79 of them needed immediate assistance. That resulted in the saved 350 jobs retained, that's kind of the equal job number to the work that we've put into that. We've worked with six local businesses on retention projects. Over the next few years, you'll see about 80 jobs that will come from that, that expansion effort that is across the county. We are mandated by the state to work with any business that, that's within Mason County, so it's not city-specific, it is not Mason County-specific. We work within both of those government entities. The next one that the board decided to focus on was, the last few years, we have been doing work to kind of promote and actually build our Mason County product. We don't have, or didn't have, a lot of land that we could market. Recruitment without a place to put those businesses is pointless. It is, it's kind of putting the heart before the horse, I believe is the saying. But, from, from the work that we've done to build up the infrastructure in areas that have land, we have been able to submit 25 proposals to businesses that are looking at our area. Of those 25 proposals, we have had 17 site visits to Mason County. We are looking in 2020 to bring Commerce, Department of Commerce, that's the state recruitment arm, down to site visit our area, just those recruiters themselves. If they don't know what we have, they can't really promote it to the businesses that are looking at a state level, down to a county level. I did want to congratulate the city's hard work on the UGA expansion, the 600 acres that they presented to the county, that the county has approved to move into the UGA. That is huge. EDC started that conversation back in 2006, so in 2020, we got it done. Well done. The exciting part of that 600 acres is it already has utilities to it. We've got industrial land, we have commercial land down Johns Prairie, but sewer is three miles away. It is hard to cite some medium-sized and bigger-sized manufacturers on property that doesn't have the sewer capacity for it. Water is good, sewer is much better to have, you kind of need that. Otherwise, you're limited in the number of employees you can put on that facility. So, well done. Thank you so much for taking that effort, moving it forward, and bringing it to the county, and I thank the county for moving that forward as well. Next up is getting it zoned correctly so that we can actually start promptly marketing it to companies that are looking for it. We don't have any large buildings that are available, so when proposals come in to us, the ones that we can respond to are the ones that say, do you have available land that is equivalent to what we need to build? Is it zoned properly, are the utilities there? It doesn't have to be cleared, it doesn't have to be paved, but it does have to be as site-ready as we can get it. So, that, that is one step closer. Very excited to, to talk about that a little bit more, if you want to know more about our inventory that we have. The biggest thing in our recruitment is our hotel recruitment work that we've been doing. So, I don't know how much detail you guys have heard, but I'll give you kind of a brief synopsis. In February, we've all talked about it for years, we need a hotel. It's, it's not something, when I talk with people, they're like, what, really? It is very specifically, yes, of course, we need a hotel. The problem is, is that we had no numbers that were backing it up. We had a lot of anecdotal stories, we had no specific numbers to be able to give to those developers to say, yes, let's do this, let's do this right now. So, in February, with funding partners, we were able to go ahead and move forward with our feasibility study. From that, we've met with 12 developers, we've had four site visits, and we have two developers that are seriously looking at our area to move forward in 2020. I want to stress that in recruitment, this is fast. This shows the need that we do actually have here, and I put a lot of that on the economic tourism drivers that we have, which are The Ridge and Kaphausen. Without those two, which bring close to 200,000 visitors in steadily each year, we would not be able to attract those developers, at least not as quickly as they are looking at us now. So, wanted to give you a heads-up kind of on that. We'll keep you updated. Generally, we work through Jeff, so he can share, we don't share names at this point. As soon as we can, you'll get those names, but we feel very comfortable saying that we, we definitely have developers that are looking in this area. They are looking at the 101 corridor area, the two properties that are the most intriguing to them are the acreage behind Walmart, which is bigger than they need, but about half of it is wetlands, and then they're looking at the county's property. So, if you can kind of in your mind picture any land between those two, that's where our hotel developers are looking at. We have also shared our hotel feasibility study with Hall Equities to really kind of help them move their project along, as they had a study and they wanted kind of verification on what it is that was found in their study, which it found that they needed a hotel as well. So, hopefully that will help. That is property that is already within the city limits. The other properties that we're looking at are outside of the county, or outside of the city limits, because other than the Hall Equities, there isn't a lot of land that you have within your limits to be able to cite a business like that. They aren't looking at just a hotel, which is about three acres generally with the parking. They are looking at multi-use. So, you're looking at restaurants, you're looking at potential retail as well. Excuse me. The other thing that I wanted to talk with you about, this leads into hotel needs, is MotoAmerica that's coming at the end of June, wanted to give you, guys, I'm sorry. Corn gave me a throat problem, so I'm blaming her. So, if you haven't heard, the Rich Motorsports was given their first national event. It is a multi-year contract. This is not something that we're working toward, and then it's going to go away. This will be here for years, and this will be the first step in the other approval process for other national events that they're going after. They are not stopping at this one. They are filling out their calendar really robustly to really try and house those national events here. I want to say four to six national events is what they're shooting for. I'm happy to have Tracy come in and meet with you. She's out of town this week, but she said, pick me out. She will come here, she will be happy to answer any questions that you have. But MotoAmerica is, it is, the, the round that we're hosting, it's a 10-round championship race. It is round five that we are hosting here, and they are predicting between 13,000 to 15,000 people within that three-day weekend. That does not include the hundreds of people that are on the teams that will be here the week before and the week after. The work with the hotel really kind of resounds when you talk about it like that. We are not housing even a quarter of those people here, in Mason County or in the city of Shelton, because we do not have the capacity. The casino fills itself, Alderbrook fills itself, we fill Olympia. So, really, what we need to do, and the hotel, if they were to buy the property right now, get it moving, it's not going to be ready for this year, but it does give us the ability to prep for next year. Once that hotel moves forward, you're looking at fast track, maybe 14 months, and I'm looking at the city and the county to make it fast. So, really kind of, just to give you a timeline on what that project would look like. So, what are some other ways that we can capture those dollars for those people that will be attending here? There is work that's happening with The Ridge and our, our merchants. How do we pull them down? How do we pull them out to The Ridge? Tracy is already scheduling most of our truck restaurateurs, I don't know if that's the technical term for it, but they will be on sites out there. They are building different satellite sites to be able to move people around their property. But that event closes at 6:00. We want to keep those dollars still here in our community after that. Send them home to sleep, have them come back, and 8:00 the next morning, start over again. So, that conversation is happening with The Ridge, and I'll leave it to her to give more information on it, but she's happy to come and do a presentation on what that impact looks like, what the major companies and manufacturers are that sponsor that, that will be here. She's working a scholarship program with the high school to relay trainings in journalism and catering and all of those different avenues, so those children can get that experience as well. So, it's going to be a great program, we just need to be able to capitalize on it. Next up, I don't know how much time I have, so just when you want me to stop talking.
You're fine.
Our entrepreneurial efforts is kind of our third, our third wave of work. The businesses that we can start here and stay here and grow here are the ones that are going to kind of last, last the mile. We need to be able to provide trainings for them, we need to be able to provide easy access to startup facilities for them. We have partnered with Enterprise for Equity and the county for a business builder training. We've had 130 local citizens that is free to our area for our local, those that live here, those that work here. So, 130 of them have gone through, 40 of those are moving through the process, they've graduated, they have a business plan, they're moving forward with their next step. So, we are looking at potentially digital resource centers, different counseling. I know that the Chamber does counseling as well, so as much as we can build up those, those efforts, those trainings, the better our, our local citizens are moving forward. Wanted to just really kind of give a focus on the work that we're doing for our recruitment in 2020, that seems to be what kind of sparks people's interest. We are looking at supply chain leakage that we have in our area, so what we're doing with that is, we are looking at industries as a whole and saying, what within this industry here, take aquaculture, is produced outside of Mason County? What do they use? What boxes? What boats? What shipping things that they need? What do they use that can be produced here? If we can pull in manufacturers that are already attached to an industry that is already thriving here, they will be more successful, and it makes that argument for relocation more successful. So, we are starting the process for that over the next six months. I can give you more detailed information as we move forward with the different industries, what we're seeing, what we're looking at. We are also working on opportunity zone projects. This is, as I'm sure you know, a program that's been around for about two years. We just now got the almost finalized draft regulations from the IRS and Treasury, so we're ready to, to start moving forward. What we need are potential projects that, that can be viably promoted to those, those investor groups. So, what we're doing is, we're kind of out there beating the bush with all of our different landowners, people that already have projects that are almost there, what can we do to get them to the point that they are ready to be invested in, ready to be funded, and ready to move forward. So, we've got quite a bit of work in 2020, but we're excited about it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, I'll be here till the end of the meeting.
Just a quick one. The, the hotels, do we know about how many rooms that they're looking at?
They're looking at between 100 and 120. They are also looking, they've noticed, when they looked at our area and the travel that happens on that 101 loop and the number of traffic counts that we have through that, they've noticed that instead of rooms, they need RV spaces. So, they're looking at a fairly modest-sized hotel with room to expand. That was very specific in the study, you need to be able to expand this quickly, you are going to see that it fills up. But, there will also be between 50 to 80 spaces for RVs as well.
And the county property you mentioned, is that in the UGA?
It is. We would not be able to build this outside of the UGA.
Okay, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Well, is that, are those hotels, hotel restaurant-type facility?
The restaurant won't be located in the hotel, but it will be located next to it. So, you're looking at potential two medium-sized retail box stores, a restaurant, potentially a bar attached to that, and then a hotel.
Very good. Exciting.
Just a question about the economic opportunity zones. Has there been any, has there been any interest in development within, the opportunity zone within the UGA?
Every one of the 25 proposals that we've written, that is a qualifying question. Is this property located within an opportunity zone? Does that rule it out? No. If that can, if that can kind of balance with the cost of the land, or the, the actual cost of workforce, if it's cheaper to house it in Belfair than it is down here in one of our opportunity zones, that will negate it, but it is definitely something that we talk with about every single developer.
And just to follow up with that, does, does the opportunity zone incentive expire soon?
It does sunlight, it's 10 years, though. So, what, what ends up happening is, the sooner you can get into that opportunity zone, the more you can defer on your capital gains. So, the money that you put into your investment, say I invest my capital gains into $100,000 into this project, just a round number, I still have to pay my taxes on that $100,000, but anything I make off of that while it's in that investment, that's, has no taxes attached to it at all. So, there is still a benefit, even if you were to, to fund a project and, you know, year nine, month six, and move forward, there's still a benefit, you just don't get that deferral.
So, if we can get rid of the latecomers agreement and get development in an opportunity zone, that's a pretty, pretty sweet deal.
Yeah.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is a fourth-quarter LTAC report for the Chamber. Executive Director Heidi McCutcheon has the details.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilperson. Thank you so much for having us in tonight. We are happy to continue offering visitor information services for the city. If you'll take a quick look at the report that we provided, at the end of fourth quarter, our Facebook page had about, had over 3,000 fans. It is a very active page that we see a lot of people come through. Our highest post was a live, live video announcing the Guinness Book of World Records of 797 trees. That went to, nearly 28,000 people were reached, more than 3,000 engagements. And you can see that our nominees for the awards gala was the second highest reached. Right underneath the, the photos of, of those posts, you can see Shelton continues to be the highest reach with our Facebook page, followed by Olympia, Belfair, Union, Elma, and then Tofoma. One of the things that, that Facebook just came out with is you can compare your page versus other pages, which has been really exciting for me. Thurston Canyon Chamber, as you can see, is number two, ranked above us, as they have more fans that follow their page, but we continue to have more engagement and more likes. So, while we're working on increasing that reach, it is nice to see that, that as you look at some of these other area chambers and like chambers, that, that we're able to get our, our reach out there a little bit more. So, we've had a lot of fun following that. If you look at our visitor counts, they are up substantially this year over last for fourth quarter. If you're looking specifically at the December total, it's 331% increase. That's people within the caboose at the Hootsport Visitor Center, as well as in our Chamber office. We attribute that almost in whole towards the Christmas Town USA extravaganza, if you will. It was, I've had personal friends, folks tell me that, you know, the kids haven't been back since graduation, and this year they're coming back, and they're bringing the grandkids with them. We had phone calls from as far as Eugene, Port Alene, British Columbia, calling to find out when the maze hours were and what else was going on. So, you can see a lot of increased volume during those times. And we're, we're going to touch a little bit more about Christmas Town USA, as well as the Beauchamp-Sainte here in a minute. Website and calendar, of course, again, you're looking at the, the number of visitors who went to our Christmas Town USA page was the, the highlight of our web topic during that season. We did also publish an issue of our Business Matters in mid-November that goes out, it's distributed through the Journal, as well as neighboring visitor information centers, our visitor information center, and a bunch of different businesses. So, that does a really good job of telling the story, and as you can see within there, there was an article specifically to the flower baskets coming down, Christmas decorations coming up, all of the holiday magic and Christmas Town USA events, as well as an old nostalgic photo that we thought was pretty cool, that has the, the new photo, as well as the 1950s photo when the Chamber first established it, on the front cover there. So, it was nice to see some of that nostalgia coming through also. Any questions on the fourth-quarter report notwithstanding Christmas Town USA and the Beauchamp-Sainte? So, I'll ask Rachel to come up to join me as we go through the Christmas Town USA and the Beauchamp-Sainte. So, we'll start with Christmas Town USA. And just to, to remind you, this idea was picked up in a back patio in late August, when we said, why not? That sounds like a great idea. You guys were wonderful in, in helping us get some LTAC funds so that we could carry this out, and a, a month into it, Rachel says, well, why not? So, I have this crazy idea, what do you think about Guinness? And I said, okay, go on. She's like, I thought you were going to shoot me down to begin with. So, I'll bet you.
Okay, well, so, thank you very much for this opportunity. You guys are all having a nice evening. Christmas Town was a fantastic success. It's kind of interesting to hear Heidi's results, because we actually experienced about 300% increase on our website, too, in both the Fjord, which is the magazine for the whole area, and then I was also kind of spreading it as much as possible, so we had it as well on Explorerhead Canal and really featured it and had its own, its own page built with, where we could track for activities. And it was quite surprising, I'd say probably 75% of the hits that came during that period went straight to the Christmas Town pages. We had about four different pages. And the geographic, I guess, spread of it was fascinating to watch, because with the Google Analytics and some of the stuff that comes with the website, you can really drill it down to where, what towns these people are coming from. And it was kind of exciting, because using the demo, some of the statistics that were given to me by the, just by some of the stuff that people filled out while they were there, but also from the vendors who were collecting zip codes and stuff, as the people that were shopping at their, their stalls. We had people come from Oregon, BC, Idaho, I mean, it was just crazy, just to come see a bunch of trees. So, it was really exciting, because they obviously arrived, we did everything in the evenings, they had to stay the night, because they were stuck here, and we kept them busy until 8:00, so they were, they had to go find a hotel and hang out with us. So, I have not got the, the numbers yet from the December, because they kind of report a little late on the LTAC numbers, but we were definitely up for November, because we have December numbers, and they are up quite a bit, and it's up countywide, so it's all a very positive thing for our community. Attendance was very good, some nights it was a little quiet, but it was...
By a little quiet, she means that there was only 500 people there, instead of a couple thousand?
Well, it was, it was interesting, because we had a lot of repeat people, so I thought as a community event, it was great to see so many people from our community bring their families, and if they had people from out of town, they came in, and it definitely presented a positive vibe for everyone. We prepared all of the materials for the Guinness Book, massive videos, massive write-ups, and thank you very much to Judge Greer and Chief Moody for helping us out with that, that was amazing. They did a fantastic job judging. They did a fantastic job judging and, and witnessing everything. And so, we should be able to find out how that goes within the next 12 weeks. It takes a little bit of time, but it's all off there. And what else?
So, I, I do want to mention, and I think that we've said this before, but I don't believe that this could have been pulled off in any community other than our own, from Sierra Pacific and Green Diamond, cutting trees and giving them to us, from us running out to Port Blakely in West Olympia, and getting more trees from their tree farm, Sierra Pacific giving us the wood for, to stand the trees in the first place, PUD helped out with the LED lighting. So, it just truly was a community-supported event, very much by our, by our businesses to procure the goods, and then the number of volunteers that, that came out that, you know, didn't know anybody, but they're, "Oh, we saw on Facebook that you guys needed some help stringing the lights." And people would just randomly come, pitch in, and, and that is something that is truly essence of Mason County, and, and why all of us love it here, why many of us have come back here. And I, I don't believe that any other community would have been successful, especially in such a short timeframe, and on as limited a budget as we were, to be able to pull this off. So, I'm very proud to be Mason County and Shelton through this event. So, the lighted tree maze, there was more than 900 trees. We ran out of time to count and measure. You had to number each tree, you had to measure how, how tall it was, they had a height minimum, and then be able to log it. So, as we went through, initially, we had tagged 802 trees.
Eight hundred and two trees.
And a couple, the tops had dropped off, and a couple were not adequately lit. And so, that's, that's how we got down to that 797 number. I did have the chance to speak to the reporter, a couple of reporters from Adrian, Michigan, which did the Guinness record the night before. It's so neat to see the Christmas spirit really truly across the nation. They were just excited to beat Hallmark. They're like, "We don't care if you guys took it the next night, we're just happy we beat Hallmark, and we, we got the, the Guinness number." And so, you, you know, they're looking at, they said that they saw a lot of the same, where people were coming to visit their, their town, people were coming back to town that hadn't been there for a long time. I think some of the byproduct of it this year, the number of houses that were decorated, et cetera, storefronts just seemed to be multiplied as, as it moved forward. So, it was very exciting. I don't know that we had, I think that we hit on kind of the high points of...
The other thing that was kind of nice about, is we were able to raise $2,600, which we donated to Kiwanis, and that was just in donations from the trees that people picked up, as well as people would come in, some people put $100 in, some people put $2 in, some kids just put their change in. But, that was all money that was raised during the event, and we went to Kiwanis, and they split it up amongst a bunch of different, they're going to use it, some of it for presents next year, some of it for foster families, and so, we just handed it all over to them. So, it's kind of exciting to be able to do that.
Do you have any good questions on that?
Someone said to me the other day, "What would it look like if we had a, a store window contest for Christmas?"
We, we did do one, it was, I, I...
I can speak on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, on Thursday night, there was a window contest, all the businesses, it was organized, Explorerhead Canal sponsored the first prize, and then Kiwanis sponsored the second and third prize. What we did was, on Thursday night before the parade, all the businesses were told the week before that if they wanted to participate, and what the prizes were, because it was substantially more than before, they could decorate their businesses, and they had to be ready for Thursday night. So, rather than doing it during the parade, it was a busload of folks from, I think Alpine Way, was it Alpine Way?
Maple Glen.
Oh, Maple Glen, sorry. They came through, and so there was people from different businesses and organizations that came through and judged it, and then they picked the top three. So, they were awarded the day before. And hopefully, with some traction now that there's a, a larger prize, and if we keep that up, then perhaps we will have more momentum next year. But, it was really exciting to see that Lynch Creek Floral, they donated wreaths for all the business. I mean, there was a snowball effect from people just getting in the Christmas spirit, and it was very impressive to see, even people who missed the competition, like Zeppelin, they really went all out and did a fantastic job doing so. It was, it was cool, people really appreciated it, and really appreciated, the people that came in to talk to us, they really appreciated the, just how kind and how friendly everybody was in the downtown core. It was really a good, positive experience.
So, exactly what were the number of the store, how many stores participated?
There wasn't, they didn't, people didn't really sign up for it. It was just that this was the deadline of, of when the judges were coming through, and then the, the bus went through with the residents of Maple Glen Senior Living, as well as a couple different organizations that kind of went through and judged those.
All right.
Again, I think, you know, first year, people were like, "Oh, we should da-da-da-da-da." And then, so I think the word will continue to get out, so hopefully next year we'll have twice as many storefronts that are involved in that.
So, we're like our gingerbread contest, we put it on, and my goal was to have the gingerbread contest be finished on December 12th, which was National Gingerbread House Day. But unfortunately, nobody really seemed to get the message, and we only had three gingerbread, and I was like, "Ah." So, I really hit it hard on Facebook, and when people started to realize what was happening, we probably had, I'd say we had like 12 entries all of a sudden, and people were staying up all night to get them in, and they were getting all excited, but we honestly didn't judge it until like the 20th, because we just kept giving people more time to try to get the entries in. And that's the problem with the first year of an event, if you, once you've established it, I'm sure everybody's gonna, if we don't have a gingerbread contest, they're all gonna say, "Well, we did it." But now, at least we, you know, have got that traction going, so, and it was wonderful, so.
So, are we going to try to do this again next year?
I don't know, are you?
Well...
Are you ready to chair that committee, Mr. Mayor?
It's been, it's made me want to be a part of it. I mean, the buzz was just fantastic around this town. I say if Deidre can do it, I can do it. But, you know, you should be proud of yourselves, that was, that's amazing.
Yeah, it was, it was good. I totally missed out on Christmas, and we didn't put a tree up in our house, but...
It's going to... It's going to urge other cities in other states to try to beat that, so...
Then we'll have to figure, we'll have to just do something else. There's lots of ideas out there.
You, the mayor stole my, stole my question there.
I stole it?
Oh, he wants to do it.
I was just, what, no, I don't, that's...
Yeah, he wants to do it, yeah.
But, how are you gonna top next, how are you gonna top it next year?
Yeah, right.
Good, good stuff.
Awesome.
Well done.
So, moving on to the Beauchamp Santa, which our request was between 57 and 97, $100, depending on, on what it costs to relocate Santa to Overlook Park, and, and kind of the metal, metal beams, and some engineering, et cetera. I'm really excited to tell you that Santa House has permanent home, well, seasonally permanent home. We actually came in under even our minimum proposed budget, and so, we think that with the extra funds, that we'll be able to do Paul Bunyan in the spring, and, and not, you know, stay within that budget, but that way we can, you know, continue to expand upon that. I'll let Rachel say a little bit about how we went up there.
Sure. Santa Claus, thank you, everybody, for, for help with getting all the permits and everything, that was a nice, easy transition. We had lots of help from the community, so we were able to price things really reasonably, so we came in well with, under the reason Santa Claus is so far over is for the geotechnic, he had to be certain number of feet away from the cliff, and that is the reason why he got that eventual location. It really cut the cost down quite a bit, as far as the engineering. He was in storage for a year, came out looking really good, minimal touch-ups. Unfortunately, the biggest problem was the, the hay that he landed on when we took him down from last year, and the hay actually pulled the paint off. But, once we got that all cleaned up, and got our paintbrushes out, it took us just a couple days to clean him up again. Kiwanis was incredibly helpful with manpower and getting him up, and toshers were amazing with helping us with equipment, and just being able to stage it, and get it up there, and do all that, and work with them to have a little steel delivered there, because obviously they're not small pieces of steel. Currently, the metal is going to be painted still, but the weather hasn't really been cohesive for that, because it's just a little wet outside. So, when that happens, we'd like to get out and paint them, and they'll be a less obvious color, because right now they're, they are coated with a galvanized, because they had to be galvanized, which makes them quite bright. We thought they could just be kind of a dull brown color, but the requirements from engineering, they had to be galvanized. So, so we do have, we are going to do copper coating paint, I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's the right term, but we will do that when the weather approves. And then, yeah, he was very much appreciated. We put a light on him, we put the stairs back on him, and it was not quite as convenient as being downtown, but it is so nice for him to have a permanent location, so we don't have to pull those posts out. It was very, it was a lot of work taking them in and out. And, yeah, it, it went up good, and everything clicked together, and nothing worked, so it was fantastic. Every time I drive by now, though, I do think about, "What are we going to put up there now?" Can't help it. So, it would be great to do a Paul Bunyan, if you guys are, are you okay with, if you guys are up to that, we could probably design something that would be in the Beauchamp style, and it could go up seasonally for, for Christmas as well, if that's something people are interested in. Any questions?
Thank you again for your quickness and, and allowing us to, to do it in the first place, and for letting us pull out Christmas Town USA. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready to move on to our business agenda. Has anyone signed up for public comment for the business agenda?
No, there's not, Mayor.
All right. The only item on the business agenda is resolution to update the fee schedule. City Manager Jeff Knighton has the details for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Mark was, excuse me, Community Development Director Ziegler was very disappointed he wasn't able to give this presentation tonight, but he is in Cabo and is unable to join us. So, I'm here. Couple things, the fee schedule that I'm sure you all remember, we went through last July and updated the entire fee schedule, streamlined it, reduced the number of pages and the things that prospective investors would have to go through in order to determine what it's going to cost for them to invest and become part of the community here. What we have tonight is just a few updates to that. Whenever you're doing a project this size, there are some things that were either missed and overlooked, or need to be updated to maintain parity with other communities of similar size. The first one, if you have the fee schedule there in front of you, is on page three, or the first several, actually, and that is increases to a couple of the, the animal shelter fees, including adoption, animal licenses, the surrender of dogs for within the city, and the surrender of dogs for in the county, non-resident animal impact fees, and those kind of things. And if you have any questions on those particular fees, Chief Moody is here to be able to answer those if they come up, and we can either take those now, or when we get to the end. The next couple, when we're on page five here, is a fence permit. We have a $75 residential permit, and a $180 commercial permit. One of the things, eventually, we will get to the point outside of historic districts, where we don't have fence permits at all, as long as you stay under the required height limit. However, until we update the municipal code, which is one of the tasks that we're going to accomplish this year, we need to have a fee attached to that. So, that's why that's there. This will come out again, likely in the next update for residential, other than in a historic district, because we have to review that for different purposes. But, the residential piece of that will come out at that time. Page six, there is an item there for a zoning letter, and basically what that is, is when a lender goes to lend on a piece of property, they would like the jurisdiction, whether it's the, the city or the county, to verify what the zoning is, what the allowed uses are. That takes a little bit of staff time, maybe a half hour, depending on what it is, sometimes up to an hour. So, that's the fee that we've attached to that when those requests come in. For signs, you can see the change there, $50 permit when no building permits are required, and $55 per square foot based on the valuation when a building permit is required, and that's determined by size and location. Let's see here, moving on, there were some re-roofs of residential and commercial items that were overlooked when we did the overall update. Reassurance of a plan package, that's the Stanton-approved plans that contractors need to have on site when they're building a building, or any new type of structure. And that's pretty much it. There are a few other administrative changes for the fire department, for things like flow tests and other items. But overall, these permits and these fees are administrative in nature, there are no major changes from what the council approved last July. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, or Chief Moody will, if we have questions on animal control.
Yeah, it was the animal control, you and I talked about it in briefing. The object of, is to get these dogs in, get these dogs out, whether we're adopting them out, or somebody's dog gets out, and we take it in, and we're trying to get that dog back to that person. And it seems like we've kind of gone up quite a bit on fees and storage, so I don't...
Well, let me see if I can answer it with some overview, and if you've got specifics, we'll drill down on that. So, I tasked Shannon with going through fees on this. Kitsap, King, Pierce, Calhoun, Snohomish, Cowlett, Shalan, Clark, Snohomish, Thurston, and Lewis were all the comparatives that she matched it to. So, we've got a wide variety to choose from. And I'll give you a couple examples of things that we've noticed. So, our adoption fee, when you adopt a dog out, includes spay or neuter. So, when you add that into the cost, then the city pays that. So, we get a, a discount at the vet, but it's still a significant cost to get a spay or neuter, and we believe that's still something we feel strongly about, that we don't adopt the dogs out, so they're having puppies that end up back at the pound. So, if you think about it, when you go get a dog, spay or neuter, it's a good $150 to $200 to go get a dog spay or neuter. And so, we're still only charging a $100 adoption fee. So, that includes getting the dog a vet check, getting the dog clean and healthy, and spay or neuter before the dog goes home. The other ones, and I'll give you an example, the boarding fee, we were charging $15 a day for every day your dog was at the pound, once we picked it up or it got surrendered. I don't know of a boarding facility in the state that charges $15 a day. Now, what, if, I get it, we're a municipality, we're not in it to make money, we're definitely not, by putting it to $30, but let me explain why. If that dog comes in on a Thursday and Friday, people are not in a hurry to come get their dog, and then I've got to pay somebody to come in on a Saturday and Sunday to feed the dog, clean the kennel, make sure everything's fine, because it's a 15, we tell them, it's $15 for each day, and they say, "Okay, I'll come pick it up Monday or Tuesday." And then, we've got to pay somebody to come in and take care of the dog on a weekend, to call them in and come do that. So, those are some of the basics behind a couple of the fees that jumped significantly. I'll be honest with you, what I'd like to come back with is we redo the municipal code, and, like Jeff talked about, is redoing how we do licensing in town. To me, licensing's an old-fashioned way of doing business with the metal tags. To me, it makes more sense, technology-wise, economic-wise, if we just chip the dogs ourselves down here. We have the capability to do that, we have a chip reader there, and now we just have to train somebody to do it. So, I'd like to see some adjustments as we move forward in municipal code there. And as far as the non-resident impound fees, what we've seen historically, and in the last several years significantly, the county did away with their animal control program. They were using us as a boarding facility, and they would pay us for that. Now, they don't have an animal control program. We're seeing more and more dogs coming into town that people are dumping at the pound that don't live in the city of Shelton. So, what we're telling people is, if you want to turn over a dog, that's fine, including contracts such as the sheriff's office, Squawson, and Skakomish, we also contract with. If you're going to do that, that's fine, but the fee's going to be more than it is for a city resident, because we feel the city residents are already paying for that facility, and if you're going to use a facility in our town, you should pay for it. Does that help a little bit with that overview?
Yeah, a little bit, it just seems like you want to get these dogs in and out, and if it gets, if you pick a dog up on Thursday, and they don't get the notice until Tuesday, and then Wednesday, you know, they're 300 bucks into, into getting their dog back.
And I, I want to say it's similar to a jail, our doggie jail down there, unfortunately, in that most of the dogs that come through there are repeat offenders. Most of the dogs are the ones that we've been to that house, I don't know how many times, and told them they need to shore up the fence, they need to do something for the dog, and it gets out, and they come over and pay $100 to us, while we take care of the dog for the next week. Yes, ma'am?
So, wouldn't it be a smart idea to just raise that boarding fee to the ref, I mean, you really raise it, maybe those people...
Well, it was $15, and I'm proposing that we raise it to 30. So, you know, like you said, we, generally speaking, and I don't have the exact numbers... So, you know, like you said, we generally speaking, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but to answer part of that, Shannon's done a great job in the last year of getting these dogs turned around. So most of the dogs, if we can track them, we get them back to those owners within a day or two. Sometimes the same day. Sometimes they're coming down to our office the same day. And we felt that this was part of more of an incentive to come get your dog. Because then we have, like I said, we work very well with Adopt a Pet. You know, you saw that with the fifteen, twenty dogs that we got in from Pierce County, that we were able to get them through Adopt a Pet and Shannon was able to put them out and get them adopted. And so even the surrendered dogs, you'd be surprised how many times people will come down and just dump a dog at the pound. And when Shannon gets there in the morning, it's sitting out front, or it's tied to the door. You know, and when we get, unfortunately, Judge Greer can attest to this, I won't call him up to do it, but when we get the vicious dog hearings, you know, we had one this year that we housed that dog for a month and a half. And that's twenty-four hours a day, getting somebody in there on the weekends to take care of this dog. And so those are significant costs to the city. This, I feel, you know, raising a rate from fifteen dollars to thirty dollars to board a dog, I feel it's gonna give people more of an incentive to come down and get their dog and go, "Hey, just leave it there for a few days, they'll take care of feeding and watering." In fact, we usually take care of bathing, feeding, and watering the dog, so.
So, the information relating to spay and neuter is interesting. Why aren't we just gonna recover the full cost of that? If it's a hundred and fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, why not just recover the cost?
The update in here recovers most of that cost. We felt it would be too incremental to just jump it to that actual cost. The vet, like I said, gives us a pretty significant discount on it with working with Shelton Vet. And they've been great with us. But there is a fee. It's just, they don't give us the normal retail fee, because they realize they're adopting dogs. So this pretty much covers most of that cost.
Just to follow up to that, since it's veterinarian, for veter, veterinary related, do we ever have to pay to, like, if a dog's injured, let's say, and it's dropped off at the pound or whatever, do we ever have to pay for, for that? I mean, does that come out of the?
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
If we can track an owner, we usually work pretty well with, like I said, Shelton Vet. And we will say, you know, we've got owner here, dogs at the vet here, and the vet will generally go to the owner for the billing. If it's a dog where we don't have the owner, then it becomes a decision that's difficult to make.
Understood.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is there anyone else at this time that didn't sign up that would like to speak? Having no, having none?
If you, if you don't mind, I have a.
No, you go ahead.
Question. Sorry, not, not, no more animal control questions, I promise. I did have a question on traffic, traffic impact fees. We have been, we had spoken in, in different meetings and things like that of some new innovative ways of looking at traffic impact fees and other fees. When do you, when do you think that is something we can start, when, what's the timeline on kind of implementing some of those, do you think?
So, this year is a, planned. We are going to be looking at the municipal code, particularly the development code, to make it, we want people to invest here. So we wanna make sure we meet our regular, meet our requirements and design the type of community that we would like to see, while also making it as easy as possible to do so and as quickly as possible to do so. The traffic impact fee, any impact fees really are a major part of that. However, traffic impact fees are tied to your capital facilities plan or your capital improvement plan. I don't, I don't think unfortunately that with the major undertaking of rewriting the community development code that we will be able to undertake a complete rewrite of all the capital facilities plans and CIPs this year. But that is definitely something on the horizon that I wanna take a look at and make sure we align those capital projects with the council's priorities and the council's strategic goals. The, the development code, the municipal code itself is much more than the development code. But the development code has a significant public involvement component, which makes the timeline for updating that a little bit longer, 'cause we need to make sure we involve the community and what the community would like to see fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years from now. As we are developing, as we are reworking the development code as it exists today, we'll also be working on engineering standards so that the development code and the engineering standards mesh together and they're both moving in the same direction. And we have to decide based on that design, that community's design, which capital and project, which capital improvement projects are important to the community moving forward and maybe which aren't as important at the current time or might be important in fifteen or twenty years, which then all goes into driving the fee. So it's step by step, block by block. But those traffic impact fees, if we find they are hindering investment in the community, we can take a look at different structures and different ways to mitigate some of those impacts, especially if it's a desired use or a desired outcome for a particular industry, if we're trying to attract, for instance.
Anything else from the council?
Excuse me, I did, I did sign up, but maybe Donna didn't see it.
I see you on.
For the general?
The general item G, which is the action agenda.
That was G for general.
We'll chat later.
Now I'm nervous. So.
We have the Jewett.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, would you like to recognize Mr. Jewett?
Yes, Mr. Jewett, you go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, kind sir. Probably the third time I've said thank you to Chief Moody and the code enforcement officer that he has. She's been invaluable to me in a, in a campaign of mine on RV street camping. There's two campers that are floating around town, one is licensed, one is unlicensed. She's been able to work with those individuals and the one that's licensed is no longer parked where it parks and it's roundabout around the city. The other one's been tagged for a twenty-four hour removal. One thing I do not wanna see is Shelton becoming Capital Lake. I mean, I'll do everything in my power to avoid that. So my question on that is to the council, the current codes and the policies that we have in place, do they have the teeth that they need to have to be able to enforce that so that we do not have people following and have, we end up two, three, four, five, six, now we're up to twelve campers? So does that need to be looked at? Do we need to put more teeth into that? But again, thank you for, for chief and, and the code enforcement. Again, I went to the post office and ended up picking up two bags of garbage today. Seems to be the stash point for people putting their sleeping bags, their garbage, things like that. So, I mean, those are some concerns of mine every time I go to the post office. I go there with my gloves and the garbage bags. So it's just something I'm gonna continue to do. If that's somebody else's and they're stashing it and they're not there, it's gonna get thrown away. The last thing I kinda wanna talk about is, I'm a business owner, we're on a pathway to where people come in and they travel. There's a lot of tourism that comes down Highway Three and past our building and in through railroad. As y'all come in, past the trussel, and that area's been cleaned up multiple times. And now it looks to be, you know, again, you come in there and you see that. We're a small community, we don't need to see that. So I for one, within the next week or two, will be out there picking, picking that up and cleaning it up. If I, if I'm not mistaken, there's one active tent there. Kind of caveating into, I would really like to request the city council set up a question and answer, like we went to in Olympia and I spoke about last time. Whether that's, you know, Chief Moody, maybe Casey Salisbury, some Department of Natural Resources, park officials, what can we do? What is a citizen and where are our rights and what can we clean up and what can't we clean up? And if I go up there and clean that up, am I gonna be ticketed? So, but I'll worry about that when I get ticketed, because I'm still gonna go and clean it up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from the council?
At all?
All right. The staff recommends the council concur to move this item to the action agenda for the February fourth meeting. Do we concur?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to action agenda. Has anybody signed up for public comment on the action agenda?
Well, I thought the answer was yes, but apparently the answer is no.
So it's no now. All right. City manager Jeff Knighton has information for us about the MTA parking lot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of council, and members of the public. As we spoke about at our January seventh meeting, the city collaborated with MTA, with Mason Transit Authority, with Mason Conserv, and the Mason Conservation District to seek funding from the Department of Ecology, the Stormwater Financial Assistance Program to basically pave the parking lot there in front of the MTA building on, MTA facility on railroad. In November, we had an invitation to bid for the project. We got thirteen bids, which is an amazing number. And the low, low responsive bidder was RW Scott Construction with a bid total of three-hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and twelve cents. There has been no changes since council first heard this on January seventh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Any questions from the council? Is there any questions from anybody out there that did not sign up? Do we have a motion?
I move to award the Mason Transit Authority parking lot retrofit project to RW Scott Construction Incorporated by authorizing the mayor to sign the project award form and execute the contract once it's returned to the city.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to award the Mason Transit Authority parking lot retrofit project to RW Scott Construction Incorporated by authorizing me to sign the project award form and execute the contract once it's returned to the city. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Give us some passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you could just verbally, any opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the next one has been removed. We're into general public comment. Anybody signed up for general public comment? The second, second session.
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to administrative reports. Jeff, please give us your city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of council, and members of the public. A couple things I wanted to mention. First, our snow response during the last event that we had. I was incredibly, incredibly proud of all our Public Works crews and the PUD crews for keeping everything moving and getting ahead of the storm. Putting the de-icer down ahead of that event helped a tremendous amount. And I know everybody was expecting the same thing we got last February. We didn't get it, thankfully, yet. And well, last year that didn't, like I said, didn't come till February and we're not quite at February yet, but everybody's got their fingers crossed. And if something like that does happen, I'm sure that we'll be well-prepared for it and ready to keep the residents of Shelton moving around town. But Public Works and PUD crews and the police department did a fantastic job of keeping everything, and the fire department, don't wanna forget them either, did a fantastic job of keeping everything moving and very happy to be able to report that. Next item, our Vactor truck, which everybody was interested in last year because it was such a big purchase. We have that Vactor truck now in our possession and everybody's undergoing training on that truck, which is difficult for all of them, I'm sure. But they're having a good time doing that and learning how everything works and getting ready to use that and make those activities, particularly for our stormwater upcoming permits, requirements for stormwater as efficient as possible and making sure we meet our permit requirements. And lastly, I wanted to mention the council opening. Had mentioned that a couple times at our last meeting, staff was directed to open the application process, and we've done that. We have our schedule for the council appointment on our website. I've spoken a little bit about it in local media. And we're excited to see what applications we can present to council for consideration. We will have the special meeting on February eleventh to conduct those interviews. And I think we're, we're all ready to go. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. That's all I can have tonight.
Anyone? Joe?
Can you share how many applicants thus far?
So, as of eleven o'clock this morning, there were two.
Two?
Yep.
Bringing that big interest.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? I'd like to announce our next meeting. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February fourth, 2020, at six o'clock. This meeting's adjourned.